Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, January 28th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language interpreter, Logan Showalter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill Number 63. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Henderson Brothers for services relating to the brokerage of a one-year access workers' compensation insurance policy for some not to exceed $30,000. This contract allows for two one-year renewal options at the same price at the discretion of the city. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 64. Resolution amending Resolution 794 of 2019 entitled, Providing for a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract Extension with B2G Now and Providing for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $59,636 to list the correct years for which the contract is valid. Bill Number 65. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $8,744.72 to Kittlesett LLC in College Station, Texas for professional services in relation to lawsuits filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 66. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Peach Regallo, Basick, and Respondee LLP in One Oxford Center for legal services in connection with employment law-related training in an amount not to Bill Number 67. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Precise Discovery LLC in an amount not to exceed $3,814.40 for professional services in connection with the billboard litigation. Bill Number 68. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Leach, Tishman, Fuscaldo, and Lamp LLC for legal services in connection with an employment-related matter in amount not to exceed $13,000. Bill Number 69. Resolution to authorize and direct the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds of the City of Pittsburgh in the maximum aggregate amount not to exceed $52,400,000. Councilman Coria O'Connor presents Bill Number 70. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into financial and in-kind sponsorship agreements for the city's official Office of Special Events 2020 season. And Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 71. Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, submitting fiscal audits of the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Finance, Real Estate Division, and Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, Tax Abatement and Tax Incremental Financing Program dated December 30th, 2019. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, January 28th, 2020. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. We will be joined today and led by, in the Pledge of Allegiance, by the students from Bishop Canavan High School in District 2. Turn to come forward and turn, turn towards the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business, thank you very much, we're going to stay here. Our next order of business is proclamations. I'm going to present my proclamation, then we'll have one by Councilman Wilson, and I'll start mine since Bishop Canavan is here. It's Catholic Schools Week, in case you don't know. We'll give you all a chance to introduce yourselves, too. I want to welcome Bishop Canavan. Bishop Canavan is located in District 2. It's on the border of East Carnegie and Oakwood in our district, next to St. Paul's Seminary. A lot of people think it's Crafton Borough, but it is the City of Pittsburgh. Across the street is Green Tree Borough. And so, we're really proud to have this school in our district. The students do a lot for our area, including helping us pretty much annually with the Easter egg hunt for District 2 and a lot of other things that they and their families do for our district. So, we're very thankful to have Canavan, Bishop Canavan, in our district. Whereas, the 46th Annual Celebration of National Catholic Schools Week will be held on Sunday, January 28th through February 1st, 2020. And whereas, the schools of the Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh play an important role in building faith, developing communities, and in promoting service. One such school is Bishop Canavan High School, which celebrated 60 years on November 22nd, 2019. And whereas, Bishop Canavan High School, located in the East Carnegie-Oakwood neighborhoods of District 2 in the City of Pittsburgh, is a college preparatory school committed to Christian education rooted in the Gospel of Jesus Christ and the tradition of the Roman Catholic Church. And whereas, they endeavor to shape students in order to graduate as outstanding moral and ethical leaders in the communities in which they live, work, and worship, and challenge graduates to a life of learning and growth as young men and women in service to others. And whereas, of the 99% of the students who attend and graduate from Catholic high school, 86% go on to attend a four-year college, all indications that Catholic schools are producing extraordinary young people who are committed to their, to their future. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Catholic, Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh for its commitment to excellence in spiritual and academic instruction, and congratulate Bishop Canavan High School on its 60th anniversary. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, January 26th through, through Saturday, February 1st, 2020 to be Catholic Schools Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
I guess I forgot that part. The proclamation's approved. And so, we're going to let you say a few words, but first, we want to introduce the people that you have with you, because I see State Representative Deasy's children are here, who also lives in the Westwood neighborhood of District 2. And so, we'll introduce yourself first, and then the students, your students.
My name is Michael Joyce and I'm the Principal of Bishop Canavan High School. We'd like to thank Council President Smith for the opportunity to be here and celebrate Catholic Schools Week.
We're going to give you a chance to talk more.
We have with us several students from Bishop Canavan who really make up not only our current student body, but our school's history. These students come from families that has sent, have each sent at least four students through to Bishop Canavan throughout our 60 years' history. So, we have Carson Gaitens, Francis Boquicchio, Sam Simpson. The Simpson family has led us with seven students. Tom and Abigail Deasy, Gina DeFrank, Ava Gaitens, Josie Boquicchio, and George Shorthouse.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say, State Representative Deasy has four kids. She's sent all through Catholic schools. So, do you want to come up and say a few words, and then we're going to have all members come up and take a photo.
Oh, no, okay, okay.
Just would like to, very grateful during Catholic Schools Week for the opportunity to, to be here and to bring these outstanding students from outstanding families. Bishop Canavan is a really special community. It's my second year as the principal and it's, it's families like this that make it a, a very special place and just a privilege to be a part of the community. Council President Smith, right, it is kind of located in between Crafton, in between Green Tree, but it is part of the City of Pittsburgh and we're proud of that and have a really good relationship with the city and the police and, and things of that nature. But we're a school that's really moving in the right direction. We have, in, in the last year, two model classrooms that we've debuted, a brand-new Innovation Center, a broad, new broadcast studio, and then for next school year, we're opening a, a new fitness center, as we try to provide a 21st century learning environment that students from families like this get the opportunity to enjoy for many years to come. So, thank you very much.
I don't know if all members would like to join us for the photo. And I do want to say that my brother has dedicated a lot of time, he passed away, but he dedicated a lot of time to Catholic schools. He was the Vice Principal with Central for about 20 years, and he helped start the Seton Center in Brookline. He's just done, he was on the Board of Canavan, on the Board of Duquesne University, and just did a lot. And I'd just like to honor him as well during this time, but he has passed away. So, everyone's come, come up for a photo. Thank you so much, Reverend. Thank you.
All right. It's my pleasure to read the proclamation for George Martin. So, whereas George, Mr. Entertainment Martin was born in Millville on February 2nd, 1928, into a family of six brothers and sisters. George has been a longtime resident and a small business owner in Pittsburgh's Northside, where he has also spent 69 years as a member of Allegheny Lodge, Number 339, of the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks. And whereas, George is currently the Chaplain of the Allegheny Lodge of the Benevolent, excuse me, and Protective Order of the Elks and past Exalted Roller, which is equivalent to the Board President. He spent four decades as Entertainment Chairman, booking concerts and shows for Lodge members. Adding further for his nickname, further reason for his nickname, Mr. Entertainment. And whereas, this Friday, January 31st, George will celebrate attending bar at the Lodge on his 92nd birthday. George's goal during the celebration will be to serve 92 drinks, one for each year of George's life thus far. The celebration will draw a large crowd of the Elks members, guests, family, friends, and well-wishers. God bless America, led by George, will be wonderfully performed multiple times. And whereas, George's birthday, birthday tradition has been to tend bar at Allegheny Elks Lodge, Number 339, every year on his birthday, serving as many drinks as the number of years he has lived, as long as he is up to the task. And now, therefore be it resolved that the, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend George Martin for many years, for his many years of dedication to the, to the entertainment and happiness of his customers, fellow Elks. The Council of the City of Pittsburgh looks forward to the future celebrations of George, Mr. Entertainment Martin's birthdays, and wishes him many more years of happiness, doing what he loves to do. Thank you, George. I just want to say that I-
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That was my first one.
You did good.
And I got a little bit of frog in my throat.
Everyone's more impressed with your distinguished guest, so don't worry.
What I wanted to say, just want to say a couple of words about George. I had a pleasure meeting George a couple of years ago, and when I first met him, I was happy to hear that he's from Lockhart Street, which is where my grandparents raised my, you know, that's where my dad was born. But I really appreciate getting to know him and more about the area, and I'm looking forward to Friday. George would like to come up?
If I may have your permission?
Oh, please.
No, I don't need the microphone.
Oh, okay.
He needs the microphone. We're recording.
Television.
Oh, okay.
What's that?
Give him the mic.
Never heard entertain or turned on the microphone.
Thank you very much. Madam President, Members of the City Council, Members all. I want to say one thing to begin my short speech, is that I'm honored to be here and stand before each and every one of you. And as a veteran, as an individual, and I have served Allegheny County, City of Pittsburgh, proud to do so whenever I was called, and it is really an honor to stand before each and every one of you to give a short, short few remarks. I have been blessed by the good Lord. I didn't ever dream that I would reach 92. I thought 67, 68 would be good. But the good Lord has been good to me, and I've been blessed. And a year ago, I stood before this council to accept another reward, and I was so honored. And so doing, I ask each and every one of you now to do me a favor. Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. I want each and every one of you and all the people here today to rise in your strength. Stand up, please. Everybody rise. Now, one of my favorite, in fact, it is my favorite song, is "The Great Country of Ours", God Bless America. Now, I do it in the key of G, okay, on the count of three. Now, please, let me hear each and every one of you sing from the heart. Are you ready? On three. One, two, three. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above, from the mountains to the prairies, to the ocean. Whitewood home, God blessed America, my home sweet home. Now, here we go. God blessed America, my home sweet home. Very, very good, very good. Very good. Again, I want to say it's an honor to be here today, and Friday's going to be another, another day that I'm going to hope that each and every one of you, if you wish to join me, Allegheny Lodge 339 on Cedar Avenue, are welcome to do so.
Thank you.
At this time, again, thank you, Madam President, Members of the City Council, and God bless.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Would anyone like to join us for a picture? How's that working?
Do you want us to alternate? Will all members please join us?
Yeah. Oh, are we all coming up? Is there an official way to ask them all?
Third meeting, I feel like I lost total control. And we have a proclamation of Councilman O'Connor to be read into the record.
Councilman O'Connor presents. Councilman O'Connor presents.
Question, Dan.
Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, February 21st, 2020, to be FOP Fort Pitt Lodge Number One Retirees Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
You have one, two, Council?
I have a will of council, Madam President.
Okay. Do you want to vote on this?
There's one more.
Two more.
Two more? Okay, I'm sorry. Emily has one on here. Oh, now I see it, it's three.
Councilman O'Connor also presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare January 25th, 2020, to February 9th, 2020, to be Lunar New Year in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman O'Connor presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, February 1st, 2020, to be Mascot Skate Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Now, all in favor? A wait. Motion to approve.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we vote on that?
Aye.
And Councilman Kraus, you have a will of council.
Yes, Madam President, thank you, I have a will of council. Last paragraph, Madam Clerk, if you would, please. Thank you so much.
Councilman Kraus presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby oppose any federal increases in truck size or weight at this time.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilman, do you have any comments?
No, just a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution's passed. Now, we'll move on to the next order of business. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize, and when the red light comes on, your time is up. Will the first speaker please come to the podium? First speaker, please. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. First, I wanted to start off that I live up in Kayley, where it arises, and we've had four deaths up there. David Holmes, he was the president of our tenant council. He just, one day, just dropped dead outside of a woman's house. She heard him stumbling, and then, when she came out, he, he was there, laying there. Kimberly Knight, she's a younger woman. I think she had some health problems, but she was a younger woman, much younger than, than most of the people. Linda Parker. Linda Parker was my brother's, foster brother's wife. They had grew up together. They grew up as, as brothers, brothers. Because I told you, as I was young, we were separated from my mother and put in foster homes. There was nine of us. We all went to different foster homes, and that's a hard thing for people to understand. We were all raised by different people, where each of them had their little problems, and it was hard for us to even get together as a family, to have the bond, especially when you don't. I was young, seven, when we were taken from my mother. And I can remember, sometimes we would be on the bus, and I would be looking at the women and thinking, is that my mother and don't remember me? And I remember my foster mother was sort of mean woman, and she said to me, she was saying to me, she was saying, she wasn't taking me because I must be funny. I never understood what she said. When she said funny, I was looking at the women, but you must understand, as a child of seven, and I had not seen my mother until maybe three or four years after I was in the foster home. I found out, my mother came once, and she said that we stood and stared at her, me and my sister was a little, she was three. We were, we were standing there staring at her, but with the foster mother, we were calling her mom, and she said she left crying, she never came back again. And also, we had another person that died, Barbara Tucker. She's the sister of Gloria Jones. Many people would remember the Tuckers. Now, Barbara was 70-something, she was in a wheelchair, she looked very young. But Gloria explained that at nine, she had got so, she couldn't walk anymore. But this family of Jones, of the Tuckers up in Whiteside Road, everybody knew them. And I'm saying this because you need to, our community needs to know, when we lose someone, that a lot of people know. And I felt the same way when I saw the vigil for the homeless people. I didn't know there was going to be one. I would have been there, because you and everybody needs to understand, they were human beings, even though they were homeless. I tell you that. My time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Have a good day. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Lisa Dearwald. I'm here as a recruiter for the 2020 Decennial Census. I work out of the Area Census Office here in Pittsburgh, representing Allegheny County. I would like to make everyone aware, if they aren't already, that we have employment opportunities available, part-time temporary work. The goal here is to hire people that are going to work in the communities where they live. So, we are actively recruiting to make that happen, and we are seeking out opportunities to have recruiting, recruiting events in the next month. So, if anyone is aware of any events where you will be with the community, please call our Area Census Office. We will work with you to set you up with someone appropriate to come with you to speak as few minutes or up to 15 minutes about the census, about those recruiting opportunities. And then, we will follow up with an event where people can come, visit with a recruiter, and we will facilitate them filling out their applications. So, I will have information in the back of the room. The telephone number to call, in case anybody wants to jot it down, to talk with the Area Census Office, is 855-JOB-2020. That's 855-JOB-2020. And I would add- And I would ask to keep in mind that we're coming into Black History Month in February, so I'm sure there are going to be events in communities where this opportunity to partner with us and make this a success are going to happen. So keep in mind, we want to make your community successful. We want to make the complete count successful. We're mission aligned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Mitch Swain. I'm the CEO of the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council, and I'm here today with regards to Ordinance 2020-022 regarding the amusement tax. Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council has membership of about 145 arts and cultural organizations, many of which have exemptions, or I think if they knew more about this, it would, would seek exemptions to this. And, and we have a prior history of working with City Council to remove the amusement tax via exemption going back in the early 2000s and mid 2000s for arts nonprofits. And we just became aware yesterday that there are some significant revisions to the language with regards to the amusement tax. And I made a few phone calls to some arts and cultural leaders. No one really knows anything about this. I think there's some substantive changes, you know, to the language, which, many of which look positive, but we would like to know more about this. And, and so I'm, I'm asking if there's any opportunity for a pause to be taken with regards to passing this today, so we would have a chance to review, meet with, you know, whomever would make the most sense, either in, you know, committee or, or office within, within the city, to know more about this, possibly make suggestions. And, and we, we would certainly ask for that to be a brief pause. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Good morning. Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Homewood and the Hill, Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2020, globalintelligencesociety.org. Virginia is central to the 2020 presidential election. It's not Iowa, and therefore is the center of my effort. Are Democratic Partyites in Pittsburgh, citywide, USA, nationwide, using impeachment to undo the Republican Party Trump 2016 presidential win? An insidious, deep state action inflamed by liberal socialist ideology. There are millions, tens of millions of US citizens that think so. Concern of City Council is information and intelligence on racism in Pittsburgh and the United States. The United States has been factually a nation dominated by white male actions since 1789. Question, is that racist? White males led by Virginian plantation owner Thomas Jefferson said yes to the idea all are equal in the founding document, the Declaration of Independence, in 1776. White males led by plantationist James Madison, also a Virginian, said yes to the idea, oh, ideology, I think, that blacks were unequal, three-fifths of a white person in the Constitution. How is the foundation of the United States of America not schizophrenically racist? Presidents of the United States, twelve of these presidents owned slaves, and eight of them while they were in the White House. Visualize this, that George Washington owned slaves, owned black people, and they were in the White House, and Thomas Jefferson. James Madison, James Monroe, Zachary Taylor, John Tyler. How was the institutional office of the US presidency not corrupted by this anti-black racism? This includes Ulysses Grant as a slave owner before he became a president. How were the actions of possible and empowered US presidents not compromised by this racism? I think that, that Virginia is the center. I think that Richmond now has a black mayor, LeVar Stony, and I think that what many people, many white people believe is that, that Robert E. Lee is being reincarnated in Trump. Trump viscerally rejects this deep state liberal establishment opposing him, but he doesn't resist the rise of, or resurrection of, conservative state deep within our once and future white male-dominated nation. I completely and utterly reject this.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the next order of business, the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Good morning, Mr. Burgess, Councilman Burgess. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Morning, Madam President. Thank you.
Good morning.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 63, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Henderson Brothers for services relating to the brokerage of a one-year excess worker compensation insurance policy for a sum not to exceed $30,000. The contract allows for two one-year renewal options at the same price at the discretion of the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lovell, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Lovell presents Bill Number 64, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 794, Providing for a Professional Services Agreement Extension with B2G Now, and Providing for the payment thereof at a cost not to exceed $59,636, to list the correct years for which the contract is valid. Bill Number 65, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $8,744.72 to Kittleson LLC for Professional Services in Relation to Lawsuits Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 66, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Patriot Gallo, Basick, and Raspanti for Legal Services in Connection with Employment Law-Related Training in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500. Bill Number 67, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Precise Discovery LLC in an amount, in an amount not to exceed $3,814.40 for Professional Services in Connection with Billboard Litigation. Bill Number 68, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Leach, Tishman, Fusco, and Lamp for Legal Services in Connection with an Employment-Related Matter in an Amount Not to Exceed $13,000. Bill Number 69, Resolution Authorizing the Direct and Incurring of Non-Electoral Debt Through the Issuing of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City in the Aggregate Principal Amount $52,400,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 70, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into Financial and In-Kind Sponsorship Agreements for the City's Office of Special Events 2020 Season.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 72, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855 by Transferring a Total of $20,000 Within District One Neighborhood Needs to War Memorials. Bill Number 73, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 549 Providing for Agreements and/or Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for City Council Neighborhood Needs Program, and Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof by Transferring $20,000 Within District One Neighborhood Needs to War Memorials.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I have a one communication from the Department of Finance Fiscal Audit Report. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Council President Smith presents Bill Number 71, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller Submitting Fiscal Audit of the City of Pittsburgh Department of Finance, Real Estate Division and Urban Redevelopment Authority Tax Abatement and Tax Incremental Financing Program, dated December 30th, 2019.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next order of business, the Report of Committees for Final Action. Councilman Lovell, Chair of, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lovell presents Bill Number 59, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January 22nd, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Six, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement for Consulting Services but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed $150,000. Bill Number 21, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article I Administration by Adding Chapter 212 Administrative Matters for Taxes and Fees. Bill Number 22, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 241, Amusement Tax, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 23, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Parking Tax, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 24, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Payroll Tax, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. And Bill Number 25, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Richard King Mellon Foundation to Purchase a Regenerative Street Sweeper to Assist in the Ongoing Removal Removal of Debris from the New Bike Trail at Hazelwood Green and Other Premodular Surfaces, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $187,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Councilman?
Thank you. Madam President, yes. This morning, I had an opportunity to speak with Director Lanier and council members about recommitting Bill 22 so that we may have further review of the bill. Tomorrow, when it comes up, I'm going to call for a one-week hold to give us the time to make any revisions that might be necessary. But for today, I'm going to offer up a motion to recommit Bill 22.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Second.
On the recommittal, any discussion? Thank you, Councilman. So, do we take a, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? There's opposed? Okay. So we'll hold the bill for tomorrow, or we commit the bill for tomorrow, and then you're going to make a motion to hold. I just want to personally thank you, because you came up and talked about it, but I want to thank you for keeping an eye on this and making sure we're doing our due diligence on the bill.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. And now the other bills. You've heard the reading and the title of the, of all the other bills, or any other discussion? Okay. The bill, the bills are now ready for final action. The, all in favor of the passage of the bills? Will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we'll move on to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Work Services.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. That's a lot of bills.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 60, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 22nd, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Recycling Partnership, Inc., to Conduct Public Outreach Surrounding the City's Recycling Program, and to Purchase Container for Curbside Residential Recycling Collection, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $500,000. Bill Number Nine, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Rubicon Street Laid Out in the Elizabeth Ebbs Plan of Lots 3647, from Mann Street to its northern terminus in the 19th Ward, 2nd Council District. Bill Number 10, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 901 by Accepting the Adjustments to the Right-of-Way as shown in Revised Parcel Number 18, Council District 6. Bill Number 11, Resolution Accepting the Dedication of a Portion of Lidle Street, Beehive Street, and Eliza Street in the SP 10 Hazelwood Green Specially Planned District, 4th and 15th Ward, 5th Council District. Bill Number 12, Resolution Approving the Recommendation of the Department of the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure at Fallow Fields Avenue from Hampshire Avenue to Broadway Avenue to be Reconstructed as a Concrete Railway in accordance with Section 41706 of the Code of Ordinances. Bill Number 13, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreement with the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County to Receive Grant Funding to Support Homewood Complete Street Planning Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $81,000. Bill Number 44, Resolution Granting unto Gartley Group LLC Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use of their own cost and expense and interest ramp at 4736 Liberty Avenue, 8th Ward, 7th Council District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills, or is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman Coghill.
I just have a question on, on Number 12. That's, that's in my district. That's, that's in Beachview. And it says, "to reconstruct concrete." But it's, it's cobblestone. And what they're doing is taking the cobblestone up and putting the cobblestone back in the areas that they're repairing. And I don't know, maybe that's just the verbiage that they use, "concrete." I'm just making sure that we're not concreting it. I didn't. No, I don't want to hold it, because if they're concreting it, fine. But, you know, from what I understood, it was the cobblestone.
So I think you can have that conversation with the director, and if you're not comfortable, then you can amend it, and to make sure that the final bill reflects what you want.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Because you don't want to, you said you don't want to hold it or recommit it, right?
I don't.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay. Let's see, members.
So we can work it out. I'll work it out with the director. I'll, I'll call him and make sure.
I just want to make sure.
And if it's a problem, we can amend it.
Okay.
Is there any discussion, any further discussion?
Seeing none, the bills are, have received, have, are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill? Will vote aye. Bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally, oh, I'm sorry. Aye. I'm sorry. I forgot to jump ahead.
Nine ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Now we'll move on to Councilwoman Strasburger for the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Madam President.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you wrote your terms.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 61, Report of the Committee on Performance and Asset Management for January 22nd, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 27, Resolution Amending Resolution 663 with an Agreement with E-Doc Technologies, LLC for Licensing Services and Maintenance and Support Services for a One-Year Contract Extension at an additional cost not to exceed $35,765.43. Bill Number 28, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 146, which authorized to the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract with Q-Sen Technologies, Inc., for the Purchase of Constituent Relationship Management Software Services Necessary for the Operations of the City's 311 Response Line by Extending the Term for One Additional Year and by Increasing the Authorized Spending Amount by $56,274.75.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no further discussion, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zeros nos.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we'll move on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 62, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for January 22, 2020, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 14, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 1717 Locust Street. Bill Number 15, Resolution Adopting Plan Revisions to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 112 through 134 Bureaux Street Land Development Project. Bill Number 16, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Middle Street Triplex, 734, 738, and 742 Middle Street. Bill Number 17, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Properties Located at 5305 and 5307 Home Street. Bill Number 18, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the McArdo Residential Project 911 Pretense Way. Bill Number 20, Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to Extend its Term of Existence to a Date that is 50 Years From the Date of Approval of the Amendment to the Articles of Incorporation by the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and in Stormwater Planning, Management, and Implementation to the Purposes of the Authority.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills, or is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And now we'll move on to motions and resolutions, and I have one announcement and then some comments. A reminder that the Cablecast public hearing for tomorrow has been rescheduled for February 19 at 2:30. There are no public hearings scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. Do we know what that hearing was for? Do you want to, Councilman?
May I?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, that is a rezoning on the Southside Hospital, which is presently part of the Mercy Campus, and it needs to be separated away from the Mercy Campus since the Urgicare Center is moving, and that body, or that building is now going to be used for tech employees. And the reason for the rezoning is that it would fall under the requirement of the Tenure Master Plan for the Mercy Campus, and it's no longer a part of the Mercy Campus. So it's really just a separation of that building from the campus so that it can house tech employees. But we hit a hiccup, and we had to reschedule for, I forget, I'm sorry, February 19? Yeah, okay. And then I have one other thing, if I may?
Yes. And then I want to say something too.
Okay. So you'll notice that Mike and Kim are both not here with us today because, under the direction of our clerk, they are continuing their education and helping to improve their skill sets to be better employees in the clerk's office. And so I want to recognize our clerk for her commitment to making certain that our staff in the clerk's office is continuing to be elevated in their own personal sort of achievements. But also, I want to recognize the clerk, we haven't mentioned this yet, but recently the clerk received her Certified Master Municipal Clerk status, meaning that that is the highest level of accreditation that you can possibly reach in her field. And we are really, really lucky to have Brenda here as our clerk and to have such stellar qualifications. And so I just wanted to offer a big congratulations to you.
Congratulations, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Madam Clerk.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman, for paying much attention.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill.
Yes. Well, congratulations, Brenda. That's really something. So I just want to clarify on Number 12. That was a mistake by me. We did agree to lay that in concrete versus putting the cobblestone back. Just so happened, the other end of the street, we're lifting the cobblestone and putting it back now to avoid, you know, the big humps and cars from bottoming out. So that was fine. Everything's good on that. It is to be concrete. I agreed to it. And yeah, so...
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Any other comments? So I'm just going to make a few comments. First, I'd like to mention that we lost Mr. Nolan, who was a veteran from Mount Washington. He was the one who led all the events up in Mount Washington. He was 90, I think 92 years old or something like that. He was in his 90s. And I want to thank him for all of his services, family for all that they've done. But we'll do a moment of silence next week when I'd like to have the veterans come in and do the Pledge of Allegiance and some other things. So we'll do that next week. But I do want to acknowledge that he has passed away. And with that said, a couple of things I just want to mention. I know it's difficult to see me behind here because I've received letters saying it's difficult to see me back here. But I am short, and I'm sorry, but this is the way it's going to be. I was offered a stepstool, but I'm not taking it. I am who I am. And the second, the two communications I received, some of the first communications I can say I received as soon as I became council president, one was repeated comments how the people can't see me back here. I told Councilman Kraus I might have to paste my face on his body. But, and the second one was to fix my hair and my makeup. I just want to tell those people, this is fixed. So if you want me to come in without it, I'd be happy to. So with that said, I have a motion to excuse the absent member and approve the minutes... Oh, there is no absent member. Councilman O'Connor's here. I'm sorry. Motion to excuse the, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meetings.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.